Good evening. Welcome to the April Plum Borough School Board Directors Meeting. May all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Vento, roll call please.
Mr. Colella.
Here.
Mr. Dowdell.
Here.
Mrs. Gallagher.
Here.
Mr. McGuff.
Here.
Mr. St. Ledger.
Present.
Mr. Excuse me, Mrs. Stepnick.
Here.
Mr. Tomorello.
Present.
Mrs. White.
Here.
Mr. Zuko.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Vento. The Board met in executive session on April 22nd and this evening, April 29th, to discuss matters of student confidentiality, personnel, negotiations, and real estate tax assessments.
Approval of minutes. Recommend approval of following meeting minutes. March 25th, regular board meeting. April 8th, Education Committee. April 15th, Facilities and Policy Committees. And the April 22nd, Finance Committee.
I'd like to make that motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no. Motion carries.
We have several district features this evening. We have invited guests. We have Dr. Nakarati, Ms. Evans, Ms. Alpino with the Plum Foundation for Educational Enhancement.
Thank you, Dr. Glasgow. Good evening. I am Dr. Lilian Nakarati, retired superintendent of the Plum Borough School District. As president of the foundation, the Plum Borough School District is pleased to announce the re-establishment of the Foundation for Educational Enhancement. We would like to extend a very special thank you to the school board for their support and cooperation in helping us to reinstate the foundation. Initial funding for the foundation was received from the DiPaolo family in the memory of Dr. Nunzio DiPaolo, who served as the superintendent of the Plum Borough School District from 1958 to 1983. Mr. Jack Cummings was superintendent at this time of initiation and recruited individuals from the community to form this foundation. In the fall of 2013, this present school board, the foundation was reinstated to continue this important mission. The mission of the foundation is to enrich and expand the educational experiences of the Plum Borough students beyond what the school district budget can provide. The foundation will initially support student scholarships, teacher grants, and selected capital projects. The foundation will be a nonprofit, volunteer-based, tax-exempt, 501(c)(3) organization. Ongoing resourcing for the endowment will be promoted by fundraising efforts through charitable, individual, and corporate contributions. The goals of the foundation include creating partnerships between school, community, and local businesses, providing enrichment opportunities in cultural, educational, and recreational endeavors for our students, assisting with and promoting capital projects that will directly affect programs of excellence for our students and staff, supplement current curriculum and educational initiatives through additional resourcing, and inspire citizens, alumni, and businesses to participate as a community to enrich the educational experiences of our community's greatest asset, our children. It is my pleasure to introduce Mrs. Marge Evans, retired assistant superintendent of the Plum Borough School District, who is our vice president of the organization, to speak on specific fundraising efforts. Mrs. Evans?
Thank you. Good evening. It's nice to see all of you again. We are excited to not begin this foundation, but to carry on the efforts of the school districts and the DiPaolo family. And as Dr. Nakarati explained, we need the support of the school district, the community, our alumni, to engage in these activities. What we have decided to do for our first fundraiser is to have a kickoff dinner that will be held this September, September 27th, at Edgewood Country Club. It's also the weekend of Plum's homecoming, and we're hopeful that we will have a lot of alumni returning home for the football game and to see family and friends, and we will be encouraging them to attend the banquet, where we will again talk about the goals of our organization. We have some things in mind where we're hoping to be able to auction off some student artwork, to have some Chinese auction baskets, to have an evening that will be fun for all of our community members, and to help realize what a wonderful school district we have, and how we can help our students succeed with their future endeavors. We will be at Community Days, Plum Community Days, handing out Save the Date magnets. We want everyone to have an opportunity, as we only have a limited amount of tickets, so when the tickets do come out for sale, we're hoping that all of you will be able to attend along with our community members. Again, Save the Date, Saturday, September 27th, Edgewood Country Club. And now, Mrs. Alpino will speak about some of our publicity work.
I'm sorry. Hi, my name's Marylin Alpino, and I've been working on the website and also the brochure for the Plum Foundation. We'll pass out some of the brochures. I apologize for that not being in color. Got the email really late today while I wasn't at home. But the brochure will be going out to the public at our Plum Community Days, and also it'll be available at the school. Also, the Plum website will have the new Plum Foundation webpage on it, and I can pass that around. It's just, we will be giving that probably sometime in May. It'll be up very soon. And through the website, we hope to have people be aware of the foundation, and also we're going to keep track of the successes that the foundation will have through the teachers, and also through the students in their educational and arts programs, or whatever the money will be used for. So the webpage will outline the mission, the goals, upcoming events, and how to contact the members of the foundation. Any questions? Just, you know, please let me know.
We would like to thank as well those members of the community that volunteered to serve on the committee, and we most especially would like to thank Mr. Tom McGuff and Mr. John St. Ledger, members of the school board who have volunteered to serve with us as well. As Mrs. Alpino had mentioned, if you have any questions, please do not hesitate to contact the central administration until our website and Facebook page are up and running. Dr. Glasgow is on the committee as well, and is serving as the liaison between the foundation and the district, along with our school board members, Mr. St. Ledger and Mr. McGuff. So, thank you again, and we hope to see all of you on September the 27th. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. This is one of the best parts about being on the school board, is to be able to come down here and congratulate our student athletes and our students in the classroom as well on achievements that they have done over the year. At this time, I'm going to ask Megan Majaka to come up, Plum student, and she won Miss Deaf Teen America. And through her interpreter, if she could explain to us a little bit about the experience that she had in this pageant.
Well, I want to thank all of you for inviting me to coming, and I'm really honored to be here and being part of this board meeting. I'm a little bit nervous. I competed for Miss WPSD last in the fall of 2011, and I won with a partner. So we went to California then, about a month ago, to compete for the national pageant. We had to do a skill, kind of a talent, formal wear, state spirit, and then also a presentation and a stage interview, and also a private interview. I competed against seven other schools all over the nation, and the results were that I was crowned as Miss Deaf Teen America 2014. And really, it's just so hard to explain how I feel. It was just a wonderful experience, and I really appreciate being part of the deaf community, to represent the deaf community there. And both being a student here at Plum and also at Western Pennsylvania School for the Deaf, I just want to thank all of you for providing me the opportunity of having an interpreter. I wouldn't be that successful without all of you, and it really means a lot to me. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Megan, very much. Next, I would like to ask the coach of the girls' basketball team, Coach Bernie Puchka, to come on down. And as he makes his way down, just a little summary on the girls' season. The team had a 15-8 record, lost to the WIPL champions, Penn Trafford, by three in the playoffs. And the most important figure on this team, 100% of the girls on the team were named to the academic honor roll, and 15 of them were above a 3.5 GPA. So Coach Puchka, thank you.
Thank you. That certainly deserves a round of applause, if we could. Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak on behalf of the girls' basketball program here in Plum. For the 2013-14 season, Lady Mustangs finished with an overall record of 18-5, and qualified for the WPL playoffs for the fifth season in a row. Tonight, I'd like to recognize two players that play a vital role in our success this past season, but the first I'd like to recognize is a player who was unable to make it tonight. Junior Courtney Zezza. Averaging close to 15 points a game, Courtney is drawing some Division I interest, and could also surpass the 1,000-point mark next season. Known for her post-presence, Courtney scored a personal high of 29 points this past season in Columbus, Ohio. She also averaged close to eight rebounds a game and four blocked shots per game. Today, we're recognizing Courtney for her Quad-A Section Team, All-Section Award, Third-Year Varsity Letter Award, and Athletic Honor Roll Certificate. That's Courtney Zezza. The second young lady I'd like to introduce is here, and this is Senior Krista Petropola. Known for her overall scoring and tremendous offensive skill set, Krista led our team with a scoring average of 18 points a game. Once deciding she was going to play in college, Krista really put her mind to it and dedicated her time this offseason to become the best she could be. Surpassing the 1,000-point mark this season, an all-time scoring record here in Plum with 1,370 points, Krista without a doubt made her mark here in Plum High School. Tonight, we recognize Krista for the following accomplishments, and it's a long list. First Team Quad-A All-Section. Fab Five East Section Pittsburgh Post-Gazette Team. First Team Valley News Dispatch All-Stars. Tribune Review Fab Five Selection. Her selection to play in the Cager Classic All-Star Game that took place on March 22nd, where she earned the game MVP and also the hotshot title. Her selection to play in the Pennsylvania Roundball Classic in Geneva College. She's a four-year letter winner and also a scholar athlete. And finally, her decision to attend Youngstown State University this fall marks Plum's first Division One female basketball at a Division One level. She's also majoring in physical therapy. This is Krista Petropola. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Coach, and Krista. Great season. At this time, I'd like to ask the coach of the boys' basketball team, Ron Richards, to come on down, and he is actually the section coach of the year, Ron Richards. The team's record this year was 18-4. It was the first time in school history they won the section championship outright, and 13 of the 19 players made the academic honor roll, and 12 of the 19 were above a 3.5 GPA. So Coach, thank you so much for all your hard work, and congratulations.
Thank you. You guys could probably stand right in front of the stage. It might be better if you face the audience, so we don't have your backs on TV. Thanks, guys. First of all, I'd like to congratulate all the other students that are being recognized tonight for their accomplishments on behalf of the boys' basketball team. As you can see, we have quite a few that, you know, took the time to come here tonight to be recognized as section champions. From a team standpoint, it was our third section title in school history, but it was the first one outright. And the nice thing from a coaching standpoint is that everyone that you see here will be back next year, with the exception of one of them. We only had two seniors. One's here tonight, Nick Stotler, who was recognized for being an honorable mention All-Section player, and a second-team Valley News Dispatch player. And Nick played the final month of the season with a stress fracture in his leg, and probably shouldn't have been out there, but he did. Without him, we certainly would not have won a section title. Nick's going on to play baseball at Cochrane College in South Carolina, and he just was a phenomenal leader for us. The other senior that couldn't be here tonight because he had a volleyball game was our most decorated senior this year. He, Austin Dieter, he was a Quad-A All-Section First Team. He was a member of the Ali Kiski Cager Classic, Roundball Classic. He was the Post-Gazette East Fabulous Five, and he was a first-team member of the Valley News Dispatch. James Edwards, sophomore for us right here in front of me, was the only sophomore to be selected, first-team All-Section, and all of Quad-A in the WPIL this past season. So it was quite an accomplishment for James. This was a, this was a great group of kids, and I know a lot of coaches say those types of things, but I can't, I can't imagine a better group of people to represent our community and our school district, as these young men did this year. We play in an incredibly tough league. All the neighboring school districts around here, I think everybody knows those schools, and these kids this year, they were really, the expectations from the outside, from the media and the other school districts, was not one that, you know, certainly projected a section champion, but these guys, they overcame a lot of, a lot of obstacles, won a ton of close games, and are very deserving of being a section champion. One other thing about Austin, just as Krista's going on to play college basketball, Austin Dieter is going to St. Vincent. He becomes our 20th basketball player to go on to play college basketball and get most of his education paid for by being just exactly what we want, a student and an athlete. So Austin Dieter is next in line for us. So, thank you very much. Appreciate everybody, and I appreciate the school board recognizing this group of young men tonight. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. I have the distinct honor to call up Assistant Coach Jerry Yashinsky from the, from the Boys and Girls Bowling Team. Actually, 11 of the 18 bowlers earned honor roll status for the winter season, and overall, 77% of our 218 winter school athletes earned a 3.0 grade point average or higher, and 60% had a 3.5 GPA or higher.
Okay. Okay, thank, first of all, I want to thank the board for having us tonight and recognizing our team. I think it's really important that we all get recognized, especially the other athletes here. First of all, me and Cliff Kirchards, the head coach, have both seen an enormous improvement over the last two years of all the kids that we've had underneath of us and on our team. And because of this improvement, we've seen, both teams have gotten first place in the section this year, and that was a first for the bowling team. The girls had a fantastic year. They finished 10-0, almost a perfect, well, they did have a perfect season as far as a match was concerned, and as far as the games, we bowl three games every week. We have 10 weeks, so that's 30 games. And they went 29, and, well, they had 29 wins, and the one game that they did not win, it was a tie. So they had absolutely fantastic season, and we're proud of them. And the boys went 9-1. It was fantastic. And the boys' team also did fantastic. They went 9-1. They were in a constant battle all year with Penn Hills, our biggest rival. Right at the end, the very last week, we did what we had to do, and we won, and through a tiebreaker scenario, we also clinched first place. So, once again, that deserves applause because they did a fantastic job. Okay, and then on the girl's side, to go a little bit more depth, they did well at the WIPL event. They got fourth place, and they didn't do quite as well as what they had thought at the regional event, but the bright side to it is the fact that all the girls, all five starters will be back next year, so if nothing else, they can improve from what, what they learned on and whatnot, and get better from there. On the boys' side, it was the exact opposite. They didn't do quite as well as in the WIPL event. I think they finished seventh place, but at the regionals, you had to be in the top six, and they finished fourth place to get their buy-in to states. At states, we finished ninth, and to be ninth in the state out of about 100, 110 teams is a huge accomplishment. This is the fourth year in a row that the boys' team has done that, and it's the fourth year in a row that they had clinched first place. So, like I said, that's a huge accomplishment itself. So, on the individual side, just a few notes. We had one girl, Ally Dick. She was a section MVP. She had the top average with a 205 average, completely surpassing every other girl. The closest girl to her in second place averaged 185. She missed the high series by one pin. She shot a 670 series one week. And Josh Kirchard, Cliff Kirchard's son, shot a high game in the section of a 279. He had a high series of a 742 and a high average of a 214. 742 series, that's averaging about 240 a game, which is absolutely fantastic. And he was also the section MVP, and he made the second All-WIPL team, and Ally made the first All-WIPL team, which you have to be in the top five to be in the first All-WIPL team. So that was a fantastic feat for her. And the last thing I want to touch base on, that I'm very proud of all these kids for, was what this gentleman said, which is the fact that four of our athletes made the Athletic Honor Roll, and seven made the Scholar Athletes. And I always told him, this is something that, when I was on the team, I, I never forgot being on the bowling team. It was something that always stuck with me, and that's why I came back to coach. I know most of you guys are probably thinking, I can't believe this kid's a coach, because he looks like a kid, he looks like he should be on the team. But I am, and I came back because I loved it. I talked to Mr. Tomorello and said, you know, I really want to do this. He encouraged me to do it, and I really appreciate that, because it's one of the best things I ever did. And, but that was a memory. That was something that I always remember. The grades are what carries you on through life, gets you a job, gets you the amount of money you might want to make or whatnot. So that's the bigger accomplishment in all of this, and what all these kids should be proud of, especially when they make that. So, that's pretty much all I have, and I'll hand these out. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Dan Yashinsky. I, my plan's after school is I'm going to go to CCAC for a small business degree, and after that, I'm going to apply at Apprentice 66, Local 66, for heavy machine operating, and hopefully get a job up there. One other thing I would like to say, too, is I'd like to thank my brother Jerry Yashinsky and my head coach, Cliff Kirchards. I couldn't honestly have two better guys coaching me. I really appreciate what they did, and they were, two years ago, they had faith in us that a lot of people didn't did, well, they didn't have with us back in that time, because we lost a few key players, and I just really appreciate their time and effort. I also want to thank one more person, which is Rich Nesbit. I, he's honestly a great guy, one of the best role models I could ever ask for. That's about it, all I have to say. I just, I really, I really appreciate them in my life.
Thank you.
I'm sorry. He, he brought up a very interesting point in thanking Rich, and I should have done it myself, because he really does. He gets the lanes ready for us, and he would do anything for us. He would do anything for anybody in this community, and I, I really do appreciate it, because he takes care of us there, so, thank you.
Thank you so much. Thanks, guys. Congratulations, everyone.
I'd like to take just a minute to thank Mr. Nesbit. The Nesbit name has been synonymous with bowling in this school district for years, and it's great to see him come and take recognition for what our bowling team has done for the borough. And Mr. Nesbit, thank you very much. Appreciate it. If, before we start Citizens Comments, if the students would like to leave, I'm not sure what your plans are for tonight, but you're welcome to leave before we start our Citizens Comments.
As you're walking out, we'd just like to congratulate you again on your academic and athletic efforts, but also thank you for portraying Plum Borough in a positive light out in the community.
Tim, if I could just add one statistic, and this, this is all of the winter sports combined, as the, the boys and the girls are going out. Overall, 77% of the 218 winter athletes had a 3.0 or better. 60% of our winter athletes, and that's 218, had a 3.5 or better. That deserves a round of applause.
Okay, we move on to the Citizens Comment on the agenda. Are there any Citizens Comments on agenda items? Could you just give us your name and address, please?
Sure.
Thank you.
Stella Orvitz, 149 Valley Fields Drive. For the past couple of weeks, I've been quietly listening at the last couple of finance meetings, and I know that a lot of work has gone into the preliminary budget, and I just wanted to express my thoughts after having attended the meetings. First and foremost, I do not support any further program cuts. Far too many years, cuts have been made and teachers have lost their jobs, and so have other employees in the district. And I know that many of our current budget woes were brought on by decisions that were made long ago. With that being said, there's really no use belaboring that point. I still implore everyone to continue to work towards a common goal of a balanced budget for this year and for years to come. A couple of things that stuck out for me at the meetings were as follows. It was stated that we need to increase our income and decrease our expenditures, and I believe one way that could, that could be done is to increase the healthcare costs that everyone has to participate in. I know my family and I have been paying a lot more towards our healthcare costs, and it would just be more equitable across the board. I also do not believe, for anyone, that pay raises from year to year should be guaranteed. I think they should be performance-based. Also, there has been a lot of discussion amongst the board members about Kelly services. And while I understand that this is a beneficial service and it frees up administration to do other busy things, I personally believe it's a luxury, and I like to use an analogy. In my house and for my family, I could have spent much better time with them, doing things for them, as opposed to cleaning my windows. And for years, I had a window service, but in the last year, with the health issues and the changes that occurred in my family, that had to go. That's a luxury. My windows can be a little dirty, and I'll get to them when I can. Cuts can and should be made in areas that do not include student programs. All of the programs in the district have merit. If they didn't, they wouldn't have been put in, in the first place. There was a discussion regards to tax increases, and I know that that's inevitable, but I believe that concessions should be made without strings attached. We have many wonderful teachers here in Plum, and because of them, my girls have had a very successful year, time here at Plum School District. I feel that's in part because of the instruction they receive from the teachers, as well as support they get from us at home. I'm just tired of watching many teachers keep their job and a few lose them. I know that money is tight, and we need to tighten our belts. I know that money is tight, and we need to tighten our belts. We need to find a way that does not occlude any additional cuts. My eldest daughter will be graduating this year with a 4.0. My youngest daughter will be graduating in two years. I'm very proud of them and the education they received here. But I feel that the future students of this borough deserve to receive the same quality education that my children have. Maybe we can learn something here from the past. That being that the decisions you make today will impact the others that follow you for many years to come. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your comments. Any additional comments on Agenda items?
Andrew Drake, Vulcan Drive. First of all, I would like to note the selection of Dr. Nakarati and Mrs. Evans are excellent choices to head up the reconstituted foundation. And I'm glad to see the board continued on with this. I know it was something we initially discussed when I was on the board, and I'm glad to see it finally move through. And both of them will do a fine job, no doubt about it. I'm also pleased to see that we continue to have a lot of athletic scholars here. And I know in April and May, we do a lot of recognition of the athletics for the spring season. And again, it's an outstanding crop of students. And everybody in the community should be proud of the successes that they've had, both academically as well as in their individual sports. I am still a little bit concerned with the budget process, having spent two years prior to being on the board and then four years on the board. And the fact that, over these four years, we have tried to set a long-term plan to eliminate the deficit that the board has year from year. But it doesn't appear like we're continuing down that path. From what I understand, there's a preliminary budget that initially had proposed to take $500,000 from the fund balance, that now wants to increase that an additional $246,000 from the fund balance, reducing the fund balance down to about $1.4 million. In addition, it appears that there's $600,000 of grant money that's going to be used to offset teacher salaries by reassigning teachers to a STEM-type of program. And while this is admirable, it's a one-time grant money. So next year, you won't have that $600,000. And next year, you'll still have that $746,000 that you didn't cut from the budget. So you'll start out the year with about a $1.3 million problem and a $1.4 million savings account. Now, you still have to deal with the PISERS increases for the next year, the current contracts that you have with salary increases. Plus, in the current budget, you don't have salary increases for the teachers or for the secretaries. So there is just no way that a taxpayer could possibly see the next year. You're not even going to be in more of a financial constraint condition than you have right now. So I think it's premature to approve a preliminary budget. I still think you have a lot of work to do, and I still think you have some tough decisions to make. Thank you.
Thanks for your comments, Mr. Drake. Any additional comments on Agenda items? Comments on non-Agenda items?
Hello, I'm Leslie Smith. I'm the treasurer for the Plum Foundation for Educational Enhancement. I apologize for missing the presentation earlier, I was delayed at work. I just wanted to inform everyone about a program offered by the Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development. It is the Educational Improvement Tax Credit Program, or EITC. And it provides tax credits to eligible businesses who contribute to a foundation such as ours, the Plum Foundation for Educational Enhancement. Tax credits are available for seventy-five percent of the contribution, up to $750,000 per year. And if the business commits to a two-year donation, that tax credit can go from seventy-five percent up to ninety percent. So I just wanted to inform everyone that that tax credit program is available. And there'll be more information forthcoming about our foundation on the website. And if there are any questions, you can certainly contact me. That was all. Thank you.
Thanks, Mrs. Smith. Appreciate your efforts. Any other comments on non-Agenda items tonight? Dr. Glassell, the Agenda.
Facilities Committee, Mr. Richard Zuko, Chair. Recommend approval of the following use of facilities applications as listed.
On behalf of the committee, I'd like to make that recommendation.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion to the motion? If no discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries.
Recommend approval to pay the GOB invoices as presented.
On behalf of the committee, I'd like to make that recommendation.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion to the motion? If no discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries.
Recommend approval to accept a proposal with L.R. Kimble for updating the district-wide facility study, including the energy portfolio surveys, for a fee of $21,000 as presented.
On behalf of the committee, I'd like to make that recommendation.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion to this motion? If no discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries.
Recommend approval to accept a proposal with Davis Demographics and Planning for School Site Redistricting Software with an annual fee of $5,532 as presented.
On behalf of the committee, I'd like to make that recommendation.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion to the motion? If no discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries.
Recommend acceptance of the new Holiday Park Plan Con Part G project accounting based on bids documents as presented.
On behalf of the committee, I'd like to make that recommendation.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion to the motion? If no discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries.
Recommend approval to donate or discard an obsolete Rifton Activity Chair.
On behalf of the committee, I'd like to make that recommendation.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion to the motion? If no discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries.
The Facilities Committee met on April 15, 2014. Mr. Zuko will make this report.
Other than the items that we just approved and voted on, there were also discussion topics. We had Mr. Russo give us a district report on the construction of the new Holiday Park School. And for any of those who attended tonight's meeting personally, you can see that a lot of the steel is up. And we're pretty much on schedule. We had an update on the gym floor, which is completely repaired and looks terrific. And there was also a discussion concerning the use of facilities on Sunday. And that has not been completely come to a good conclusion yet. So that will probably be on the agenda again next month. Other than that, there's nothing fantastic, because we just covered all those items that were of major importance. And those are the items that were discussed, but no determination's been made at this time. That's all we have.
Thank you.
The next meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, May 13, 2014, at 6:00 PM in the High School Boardroom. Personnel Committee, Mr. Kevin Daldel, Chair. Recommend approval to accept the resignation of Klein Andries, Custodian of O Block Junior High School, retroactive to March 17, 2014.
On behalf of the committee, I'd like to make that motion. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion to the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries.
Recommend approval to accept the resignation of Donald Kunkel, Custodian of Plum High School, effective June 3, 2014.
On behalf of the committee, I'd like to make that motion. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion to the motion? No discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries.
Recommend approval to accept retirement of Joyce Kahn, Food Service Worker at Plum High School, effective June 30, 2014.
On behalf of the committee, I'd like to make that motion. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion to the motion? If no discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries.
Recommend approval to hire Nicholas Renasevic, Elementary Strings Music Bachelor Step One, at the contracted rate, effective September 2, 2014.
On behalf of the committee, I'd like to make that motion. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion to the motion? If no discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries.
Recommend approval to hire Douglas Morris, Security Guard at Plum High School, at the contracted rate, effective date to be determined by the superintendent.
On behalf of the committee, I'd like to make that motion. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion to the motion? If no discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries.
Recommend approval of a maternity leave for Jessica Columbus, Spanish Teacher at Plum High School, beginning on or about September 3 through January 25, 2015.
On behalf of the committee, I'd like to make that motion. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion to the motion? If no discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries.
Recommend approval of following leaves in accordance with the Family Medical Leave Act.
On behalf of the committee, I'd like to make that motion. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion to the motion? If no discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries.
Recommend approval for an unpaid medical leave for Kerry Russo, SBIT Teacher of Pivot Elementary School, retroactive to April 7, 2014, through the end of the 2013-14 school year.
On behalf of the committee, I'd like to make that motion. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion to the motion? If no discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries.
Recommend ratifying the collective bargaining agreement between the Plum Borough School District and Service Employees International Union, Local 32BJ, for a three-year term commencing on July 1, 2014, through June 30, 2017, as presented.
On behalf of the committee, I'd like to make that motion. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Yeah, this contract's for the cafeteria workers.
Ms. Vento, I will be abstaining. If no discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries.
Education Committee, Mrs. Michelle Gallagher, Chair. Recommend approval of an overnight trip for the Plum Robotics Team on May 16 and 17 to Cleveland for the National Robotics Competition.
On behalf of the committee, I'd like to make that motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion to the motion? If no discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries.
Recommend approval of the 2014 Summer Recreation Program from June 9 through 16, 2014, as presented.
On behalf of the committee, I would like to make that motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion to the motion? If no discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries.
Recommend approval to create three new elementary STEM Studio positions and one elementary library position for the 2014-15 school year.
On behalf of the committee, I would like to make that motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion to the motion? If no discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries.
Recommend approval to eliminate the EIS Elementary Instructional Specialist Program, effective at the end of the 2013-14 school year.
On behalf of the committee, I would like to make that motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion to the motion? If no discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries.
The Education Committee met on April 8, 2014. Mrs. Gallagher will make this report.
Yes, thank you. Some of the items that we discussed at the education meeting, I'd like to make mention that our SAT Resource Center is on our website. We have a current SAT action plan that Mr. Casella is implementing at the high school. And I encourage everyone to go to the high school website page and look at those resources. It will be very beneficial to our students that are currently taking the SATs now and in the future. Also, I'd like to make mention that hopefully, you know, with the guidelines coming down with the Ready to Loan Grant money, that Dr. Rossi has researched implementing the STEM Studio in our elementary schools through K-6. This is something that will have the science, technology, engineering, and math concepts. And they'll be explored in a hands-on approach to our students in the elementary level. This will be considered one of their specials, along with implementing kindergarten again, I mean, I'm sorry, library again, through the kindergarten, through second grade classes. I also would like to say some of the tentative dates. August 19 is a tentative date for the high school in junior high orientation. August 28 is a tentative date for the O Block Junior High walkthrough for the students. And also, I want to encourage everybody to take a look at the website at our summer recreation programs, as well as the camp invention. I also would like to just put out a congratulations to our high school robotic teams for their success at this past weekend's regional competition. Still in Shock won two trophies this past weekend with an additional 1,000 cash awards. So I'd like to commend all these students on winning this past weekend.
Thank you.
Next meeting is scheduled for May 6, 2014, at 6:00 PM in the High School Boardroom. Finance Committee, Mr. Tom McGuff, Chair. Recommend approval of the Treasurer's Report and Bill Payments for March 2014 as presented.
On behalf of the committee, I'll make that recommendation.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion to the motion? If no discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries.
Recommend approval to accept the March budget transfers as presented.
On behalf of the committee, I'll make that recommendation.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion to the motion?
We have a question for Mr. Maricini. I noticed there were some transfers from the contingency fund. I'd like to know what the balance of the contingency fund is at this time.
I gave that number at the Finance Committee, and I think it was 133 left between the two. There's a contingency for assessment appeals, 161. And I don't have the information available, but I can get that for you. But I did give that number at the Finance Meeting, and I don't recall it. But there is still money left in the contingency. And what I have done in the past was take the accounts where there will not be expenditures and transfer that money back into the contingency to bolster it, you know, to replenish it, so to speak.
Okay.
But I can send that out tomorrow.
Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion? If no other discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries.
Recommend approval to provide school buses and drivers at no charge for Plum Community Aid on June 27 and 28, 2014.
On behalf of the committee, I'll make that recommendation.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion to the motion? If no discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries.
Recommend approval to assign KISO Collections Group for delinquent local service tax collections, retroactive to January 1, 2014, pursuant to Act 7.
On behalf of the committee, I'll make that recommendation.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion to the motion? If no discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries.
Recommend approval to accept the 2014-15 Substitute Support Employees Daily Hourly Rates, effective July 1, 2014, as attached.
On behalf of the committee, I'll make that recommendation.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion to the motion? If no discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries.
Recommend approval to settle the following commercial tax assessment appeals as presented.
On behalf of the committee, I'll make that recommendation.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion to the motion? If no discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries.
Recommend approval to adopt a preliminary 2014-15 general fund budget with revenues and expenditures of $58,109,391, with the milage rate remaining unchanged at 18.758 mils. Please note, this budget is subject to change until its final adoption, June 24, 2014. The budget can be found on the website in a copy, a hard copy, in the office of the superintendent.
On behalf of the committee, I'll make that recommendation.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Yeah, I have a, I'm a little bit concerned right now. We agreed that we would transfer $500,000 out of the fund balance, and now we're up to about $750,000. I think it's still premature to come up with a preliminary budget. I think we still need to do some work on. I think we still need, uh, to do some work on the budget to see if there's any more areas where we can, um, bring this deficit a little bit closer. Um, I, I'm concerned that in the next few years, uh, our, our fund balance is going to dwindle to, to the point where we have nothing, and we won't have anything left to, to use in the future. We still have, you know, several years of, of P's or increases we're going to have to deal with, and I think we still need to look at it a little bit further before we approve the preliminary budget.
Kevin, respectfully, I disagree because, um, I think people in our community and people across America, people across the Commonwealth, are tired of the inactivity of the state legislature, of the federal legislature, and we just kick the can, we just move things forward, and I believe that, uh, this is a sign to the community that we're taking action, and we are making tough decisions, we have made tough decisions, to get it to this point. It is a preliminary budget, and we will be meeting, uh, regularly over the course of the next two months, and we will be doing these finer points, but for now, I believe that, uh, we don't have the option that Washington has to not take action, and I believe that we need to move this forward.
Well, I think that's exactly what we're doing. I think this budget is kicking the hand on the roof because we're taking the money out of the fund balance rather than making the tough decisions. I think it's just a, a, a way to, you know, balance the budget without really making these decisions by simply taking the money out of the fund balance.
Well, what we'll be looking at over the course of the next couple of months, we had seventy-three thousand dollars, uh, actually, that was on the table, uh, and if, and if we're concerned about taking money from the fund balance, uh, there's certainly a seventy-three thousand dollars that's on the table that would be less money that we'd have to take from, from a fund balance. So if that concerns you, I would, I would, uh, ask that you respectfully consider, uh, maybe, maybe picking up that seventy-three thousand dollars that we're paying for Kelly Services. But again, this is a preliminary budget, and, and I, I, uh, as Chair of the Finance, I want to move this forward, and I, and I think that, uh, this is a, a healthy step that we need to take, um, and I liken it to, uh, when you're on a roller coaster, the old-school roller coasters, and you're going up that hill, and you can hear the clicks behind you, because every step that you're taking, there's a click behind you that's a support that won't allow you to go backwards. And I believe by taking this now, this holds us accountable, uh, as we have our discussions over the course of the next two months. This kind of holds our feet to the fire, that we'll be taking those discussions seriously.
I, I, I would like to, you know, I'm the first one that I, I think, um, uh, when we, when we take our votes in, in the works, workrooms and things like that, uh, I, I just, I've been on the board for three years, and every year, we come to this point scrambling to, to try to balance the budget. Um, the first year, we t- we took money from the general fund to balance the budget. Last year, we took money from the general fund, and, and we raised taxes a bit on some folks by raising the millage. Um, you know, we had a, a rebate or, uh, the Allegheny County readjustment, and essentially, some folks got a tax increase, and we balanced the budget on that. And we still have not got to the root of the problem, which is, is, is a, uh, contract that was signed years ago, and, and I, I, you know, there's nothing we could do about that, that was just unsustainable, you know? Um, and, you know, I, initially, in the, in the boardroom, I agreed that we should move this budget forward, but after considering, I, I'm not sure, you know, I'm, I'm still not sure if we should do that or not. Taking an additional sev- uh, two hundred and fifty thousand out of the budget, out of the general fund, to balance the budget. You know, I, I'm, I've been torn all week, and I, I still, you know, until we have the vote, I'm still not sure which way I'm, I'm really leaning, to be honest with you.
Well, John, I, I would just, just ask you, man to man, um, we, we moved this forward, predicated on that, uh, last Tuesday at our, at our, at our, at our meeting, and, uh, I said then, and, and I, I give my word, that we will continue the discussion. Uh, we, we are far from done with this budget, but, um, we, we have been moving this process forward, and last week at that meeting, um, we, we took a straw poll, and so-
I agree, and I, I, I own up to that. I said I, I was, uh, I did say that, and I've been, uh, torn since then, and, um, you know, I, I put it out there that I, I'm the first one to, to, to not like that stuff, but I, I als- also take ownership that I, I'm the one who's probably in the balance, and, um, you know, I, I'm, I'm not sure how it's, how it's going to go, to be honest with you.
Hearing everyone's comments, I think there's a lot of unsettled business on this budget, whether it be seventy-three thousand dollars in Kelly Services, taking too much money out of the fund balance, and even myself, I think there's, we can do a better job on this budget and take a little bit less out of the fund balance, um, and cut back on our expenditures. So, hearing these comments and saying that, I would like to make a motion to table the vote on the preliminary budget.
I'll, I'll second that.
Well, actually, I don't think the discussion was finished.
We have a motion and a second, so, this is another motion.
Right.
So, we have a new motion to table the vote on the preliminary budget. That's the motion in play, I believe, now.
Yes, that becomes a primary motion.
Okay, so-
Can we discuss that as well?
Yeah, we can discuss it.
You can discuss the motion to table. There has been a second, correct?
Yes.
Yes, you can discuss the motion to table.
Well, if we, if we table it, that's the same as not voting for, for it.
I thought we were supposed to discuss.
Yeah, Mike, Mike. Please, hold on, just talking to Mike.
A motion to table is non-debatable.
I don't think anybody could hear what I was saying.
So there's no com- comments on the table, please?
So, we're not allowed to finish discussing the preliminary budget that was put forth, so, that's it.
But there was already a motion when, for that, yes, for the recommend approval to adopt the preliminary general fund. That was a motion with a second. We were not finished discussing that.
There were other members that had comments.
Yes.
But that's up to the-
Because Michelle and Joe spoke at the same time.
Okay.
I guess it depends on who got there first.
Okay. Well, why, why don't we-
If you, if you want to continue that discussion, it's up to the Chair at that point, if there was somebody who, who attempted to have the floor.
Sure, I, 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 I think it's prudent that we have all discussions, so, Michelle?
John, I agree with you. I, I have some unsettled feelings about this preliminary budget. I think that there's one key thing here, and the reason I'm supporting it, again, I had stated last week, and I've stated continuously, that we need to get rid of Kelly Services. That's a seventy-three thousand dollar line item, and, um, you work with folks all the time, and if you ask them, just as we had a, a member of our public come and say, hey, you know, this is a luxury, if you were, you work with folks all the time, if you say, do you want this service, or do you, you want to have to do extra work, they're going to go with the service, so they don't have to do the extra work, and, and I, I do think it's something we all need to talk about. Uh, I, I would ask for compromise on that, and I also came up with another solution. I think we, as a group, and, and we're able to find out, we could use that two and a half million dollars that was transferred into that post-war fund to pay for the, um, principal on, on Pivac. So we do have another means of using, of funds that we could use rather than taking from our fund balance, and, and Dr. Glaspo stated on Ap- on, uh, April first at our budget workshop, that he would ask that we don't take any more money from the fund balance. Our Board President wanted to take all of the money from the fund balance, uh, and, and so here's where we are with this today, and I would ask, like I asked last week, for, uh, some compromise. My main reason for voting for this tonight is to make sure that, A, we know we don't have to raise taxes because we have other revenue, and I think that the taxpayers are owed that, uh, and, and two, our students are owed the commitment that we're not going to cut their programs. That's been so much discussion about, we need to cut French, we need to, we're going to keep Kelly Services, but we'll cut French. Um, you know, there's other programs that are talked about, we're going to cut programs. I, I think it's imperative that we tell our students, you know what, you're going to go into your end of your school year, and your programs are safe, you're going to have your programs for next year. And, and to me, that's the commitment that I'm making to the students of this district and to the taxpayers.
And that's, and I agree with you.
And I think we need a compromise, and I do, we have a lot more work to do, and I, I will vote for this with Mr. McGuff giving us his word that we will continue to work towards this.
For two months.
Yeah, I think that's important as well, even for the administration, because scheduling is coming up, or should be scheduled.
And we all made the commitment back to it.
I mean, it'd be a mess if we, uh, decided to cut some programs and then have them reschedule again.
Right.
And I wanted to assure, assure Mrs. Orvitz that we are not going to cut programs-
Right.
-and, uh, not raise taxes. So I think that's an important message to sa- send to the community, and that's why I'm going to vote for it. Wha- fully realizing that we're not done, and that's what the note says, you know, we, we're still going to be working on it, but I think it's necessary to let the community know that there are two things that we're not going to do. One is raise taxes, and the other is cut programs. Thank you.
Right, and on March eighteenth, I believe it was a unanimous vote on this board that nobody wanted to raise taxes, so, to me, this is just making that commitment to the community. We, we do not have to raise your taxes to balance this budget. We do have expenditure issues that we need to continue working on. Uh, I believe our administration has done an amazing job cutting as much as they can cut. I don't think there's much more that they can cut out of this budget in terms of expenses. Uh, so, I, again, I, I feel like we made a commitment on March eighteenth, and none of us wanted to raise taxes, and I would respectfully ask that you, you do support this tonight, um, because of that. We all made that commitment, we did not want to do that, and we really don't have to because there is another source of funds that we have that we can use.
I ask, uh, uh, excuse me, John. I asked myself one question, this is the seventh budget I've did in seven years, and I asked myself, before we do anything, our expenditures are where they should be, and they're pretty darned close. And then last week, we were given a memo from Central Administration, it was a warning to this board about the consequences of not raising taxes, and that's the equivalent of a black box warning from the FDA to a pharmacist. I became gravely concerned about that. And when I look back at what we did in the past, we used a strategic approach to look, a strategic approach to look forward, and now we have to tell all the stakers, stakeholders in regards to revenue expenditures and budgetary options, simply, we have to put a three-to-four year long ray plan in place before we vote on this budget. You know, we transferred one point five million dollars of capitalized interest to the general fund. Well, all we did was increase the cost of the new Pivac by one point five million dollars. Nothing's free, and I hope this board doesn't get a false sense of security because we transferred money from one fund to another. You know, we, we're using seven hundred and forty-six thousand dollars to balance the budget. Well, the use of a fund balance contribution is equal to a one-time revenue source, a one-time revenue source, and the expenditure that it should be used for, it should be a one-time expenditure, and we continue to balance the budget for day-to-day operations on the fund balance. You know, we should, we should learn some valuable lessons of unintended consequences. We built a new Pivac, considering we were going to get planned con reimbursement. Well, that didn't happen, state owes us five hundred thousand dollars. We built new Pivac using the Buy America bonds, knowing that the federal government can change the way the game is played every year, and they do, and this year, we're going to lose forty thousand dollars. We had an early retirement incentive, cost us nineteen thousand dollars a month for nineteen employees to return, uh, retire early. Well, the bottom line with that was, it was a backdoor approach of cutting ten teacher positions at the high school. The number of positions that year went from ninety-three to eighty-three at the high school. And I advise you to look at Ms. Zaff's report on the SAT scores, what happened that year. We have other huge issues, too. We can't afford to balance the bu- balance the budget on the fund balance, or teacher retirements. We have pressing, pressing, long-term commitments to this district. One is a new bus garage, and two is Regency Park. Moving the budget forward and taking money out of the fund balance may not be appropriate at this time. I think we need to go back, develop a long-term strategy, and tell the, tell the citizens exactly what's going to happen to their taxes. We can predict that now. We can know that if just the purses increase may be a point three or point four millage increase. So with that saying, um, I'm in favor of tabling this and sending it back to the Finance Committee for reevaluation.
Well, Mr. Collett, at the budget workshop, you were the one that said you wanted to take the entire deficit out of the fund balance.
That was before we got the warning from Administration. I mean, we pay the administrative staff here to do one thing, and that's manage this school district, you know, and yet we keep going, wow, you know, what do you think about Kelly Services? Well, it's a good thing, it does things for us, and we go, ah, and we say, you know what, you know, we, how do we, what are we going to do, how are we going to get revenue in fourteen, fifteen to balance the budget? And they tell us, and we go, ah, what are we paying them for? We were paying for their, for them to use their expertise and experience of years and years and years in managing a school district, and yet we sit here as a board and say, ah, well, you know, it's time that we go back and reassess this and develop a long-term strategy and tell the folks what's going to happen. In fourteen, fifteen, we heard, what, the Ready to Learn Grant goes away, six hundred thousand dollars? We learned that seven hundred and twenty-five, seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars in our fund balance we're using, that goes away? We learned purses increases are going to come? We know that healthcare is going to increase, and yet we tell the teachers, we have any money for you. So we have the money for anybody. So it's, it's not prudent for this board to just sit back and say, hey, we're going to take money out of the fund balance. We need to reevaluate that. If we have to, and it boils down, we can't come up with a better solution, and knowing and telling the folks what's going to happen in fourteen, fifteen, and two years out, like other school districts have, and I reviewed other school districts, and they do that for their citizens? The citizens need to know, and the employees need to know, and so for us just to say, we're taking money out of the fund balance, I don't think we should do that.
I would just make one additional comment. We had a meeting, I believe, right here in this auditorium on Au- uh, April first, and we had citizens come here, and I think to the person, every single one of them, said, don't raise my taxes. We had our tax collector say, the people that, that tell him, don't raise my taxes, people that literally have to make a decision whether they're going to have medication or whether they're going to pay their school taxes. And so, this is addressing that, and, and Sal, I hear everything that you're saying, the question is not if, it's how, and, and I think that, that we need to make this very, very clear, and, for, for everybody that's watching this, and for everybody that would be reading about this and, and knowing what we're doing. What we're voting on here is whether we're going to take a stand on this or not. It's, it's just that simple. And if we want to do some sort of a veiled thing where, you know, we, we, we won't, we'll raise your taxes, but we'll give an index, uh, or we'll give a, uh, an extra bonus or something like that, and then next year, when you're not looking, you know, we'll just kind of lay this on you, but I don't think, I don't think anybody would appreciate that, and I don't think that that would be the intention of any, any member of this board.
Tom, I'm not saying about raising taxes. I'm saying that we have to be realistic and project what the impact is going to be on this school district before we make any decision about this budget, and I've said that in the past. You know, four years ago, when I first got on the board, we had a strategic planning process where we projected what the, what the finances were going to be, and you know what, they were pretty darned close, pretty darned close, and we need to do that again before we get involved with passing preliminary budgets and taking money out of the fund balance. We need information, and we need data, and we need to make sure that we're making the right decision, and I don't see a one-year pu- passing a preliminary budget as a finger and a dite approach to a long-term problem that may be existing for the school district. So, we need to know as a board, we need to get ourselves together, and we need to go back into that room and, uh, require more of Mr. Maricini and Dr. Glaspo and his team of providing us the information that we need, and, uh, passing a preliminary budget, I think, uh, may be giving people false hope in the school district.
Well, I believe that by passing a preliminary budget, we can still do everything that you're talking about there. You have my commitment as the Chair of Finance to do just exactly that, but, uh, this is, is something that I think people expect of us, and, and they're, they're tired of the But this is something that I think people expect of us, and they're tired of the inactivity at the legislature. And we have an opportunity to part from that. We have an opportunity to take a stand, and it does not, it does not slow the process. I believe it expedites the process because we still will go issue by issue. We still will take a look at line item by line item. We still will have that clarity before we vote on a final budget. A lot is going to change, and I'd be the first one to say that we have our work cut out for us. But I believe that this draws a line in the sand and at least gives us leverage to be able to make that decision so that we're not indecisive two months from now when we're actually passing a final budget.
I'm going to try to say this as nicely as I can, but this board voted to take 2.5 mil out of our fund balance and put in capital improvements. I mean, there seemed to be no hesitation then to take money out of the fund balance. 2.5 million dollars, not 900,000. And I was very much against that, and I'm still against that. So, you know, the argument over, you know, taking money out of the fund balance, I think is a very weak one. Secondly, I have been on this board for eight years, and every year, I hear the same thing. Next year is Armageddon. Next year, we're going to be broke. So with that in mind, we raised taxes one year, one mil. And low and behold, the community told us that was very unnecessary. You didn't have to raise taxes, that 1.0 mil. Had we waited the following year, like we're asking everyone to do now, we wouldn't have had to raise taxes. And I don't believe we have to raise taxes now. I'm not saying I will never vote to raise taxes. Possibly next year, if we find we need it, the 2015, 2016 budget, and we need to raise taxes then, I will vote to raise it then. But I don't think that we need to raise it this year. And who knows? Maybe something will come along next year. I'm not planning on it, but who knows? I mean, like Mrs. Gallagher mentioned, the fact that we're going to be redistricting, that should save us some money. Maybe there will be more money forthcoming from the state. We can only hope, but that looks a little bit better to me. And as far as doing a five-year plan, when I saw the five-year budgetary plan, there were three of them. The budget, you know, this is what we need if this happens, this is what we need if this happens, this is what we need if something else happens. So it seems to me that you had all bases covered. I mean, you know, with the five-year plan, you couldn't lose because you had three different scenarios. So, you know, as far as planning ahead of time, I'm all for it. But, you know, as they say, the best laid plans of mice and men gang off the glee. That's Robert Burns, the poet. Thank you.
Everyone done?
Well, I, you know, a few months ago, we also agreed that we'd only take $500,000 out of the fund balance. Now, we're taking $750,000 out of the fund balance. And everyone that spoke has said that this still needs work. So I don't understand why we're passing a preliminary budget when everybody here agrees that it still needs work. So I think we ought to hold off until we hash it out a little bit more.
Well, are you all willing to look at taking money out of that post-war fund? Because that is money sitting there that we could use.
That came from the fund balance.
Which doesn't include a tax increase or cutting programs.
Right. And as well, we all made a commitment on March 18th after that town hall meeting that we did not want to raise taxes. And so I think we came, tried to come up with some compromises on using that money out of the post-war fund, and nobody wants to touch that. And so, or I shouldn't say nobody, the majority didn't want to touch that. There were some of us that did, and said, we could use this money. And Dr. Glasspool said after the $500,000 on April 1st that he would prefer we not take any more money out of the fund balance. And so that's an alternate way of, you know, finding funds that we need to balance this budget, do what we said to our taxpayers on, on March 18th, that we do not want to raise your taxes. None of us want to. We don't have to. And telling our children, your programs are safe. We are not going to cut them. We owe that to these kids.
I think the operative word here is that it's preliminary. It is a preliminary budget. So that means that we can make all different kinds of changes. And the only two things that we're promising is no tax increase and no cutting of programs.
May I have the floor, please?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you. Couple of things I have to make clear here. We did not, on March 18th, pass a motion not to raise taxes. If you recall, that was not to raise taxes over the index, which, would you please?
Sorry.
Which, to me, inferred that that left the door open to raise taxes. And I know who on this board thought that that was a good idea. And now you're denying and saying we all don't want to raise taxes, where before, you were willing to go up to the index. And now you're turning around and making it like, oh, no, we all agreed that we wouldn't raise taxes. So let's get that clear. That's one item. The next item, I can't agree on this preliminary budget because it shows no decrease that carries forward from year after year that shows a reduction in our costs. We keep going on the basis of, we're going to find ways to pay for everything, not ways to quit spending as much. The first thing we did when we had this budget, we were over $3 million. What was the first thing that we did? We took, what, 2.9 million of capital items out of the budget, and we stuck them over in a capital fund budget, okay? That just means we have to pay for them in a different way, okay? So we, now, we had that post-war fund of 2.5 million that would pay for capital items only, capital items only. So we moved the capital items over to this side. Now you want to take the money that's over there and put it over here again and spend it on something else. That's why that money was moved into the post-war fund, was because for years with this deficit, we were not taking care of the repairs and improvements that were necessary for our facilities. So let's get that real clear. The other thing we did was, this year, we had a $1.5 million capitalization windfall that we're never going to have again. If we didn't have that $1.5 million windfall, that would also be a larger deficit of 1.5 million. If we did not take the money, the capital items, out of the budget and put it over, we would be so huge in the red, it's pathetic. So we're finding ways to shuffle it around, but you know what? Nobody's finding good ways to find long-term solutions that are going to carry over from year to year. Those are all one-time items. So I'll go with the motion, and I'll still second that this budget not only needs a little bit of work, it needs a lot of work. These are not tough decisions. These are the easy decisions. This is kick the can down the road, Tom. This is not, this is not serious.
Rich, in your words, at our Finance Committee meeting, when the Administration was talking about month to month that they were cutting, you made the comment to me that they couldn't cut it anymore, that they couldn't get blood from Iraq. So to say that there's nothing taken out of this budget is simply not true. Also, I need to correct your first point there. You're talking about a March meeting. It was in January that we passed a not-to-exceed resolution. And the not-to-exceed resolution, I'm not sure that you understood this, we didn't have the option of saying that we would not raise taxes. The option was, we either put the budget at that time, put that forward, allowing us to seek exceptions so that we could raise the taxes above that, okay? And that gives the community an opportunity to say, hey, a big tax increase is going to be coming down the road. We fought, the Finance Committee fought, to take, to do what we've done every other year, and that is a not-to-exceed resolution. It only allows us to say that we will not raise the taxes above the index. So at that time, we didn't have the option. It wasn't an option that we won't raise your taxes. The best that we could do, and the best statement that we could make to this community, is that by passing this not-to-exceed resolution, we won't raise them above the index. So just to correct two of your points there.
I'd like to call for a vote.
Okay. We're going to call for a vote. Again, that's the vote on the motion to table. That takes precedence, and I suggest you do a roll call.
Roll call vote.
Spenta, could you clarify what we're voting on, just so everyone understands right now?
You are voting on the motion to table.
Thank you.
Mrs. Stepnick?
No.
Mr. Tom Morello?
Yes.
Mrs. White?
No.
Mr. Zucco?
Yes.
Mr. Collet?
Yes.
Mr. Dowdell?
Yes.
Mrs. Gallagher?
No.
Mr. McGough?
No.
Mr. St. Ledger?
Yes.
That motion to table passes.
Motion on the preliminary budget is table. The Finance Committee met on April 22nd, 2014. Mr. McGough will make this report.
We met for the purposes of drawing up and finalizing a preliminary budget, and that evening, we had a majority of the board that voted for the preliminary budget to move it forward to a vote this evening that had no tax increase, no program cuts. And so that was the primary work that we did. So we will be back in May to revisit this and to develop a preliminary budget.
Thank you. And as I'm reading the agenda now, it looks like there's an error. The next meeting is not on May the 20th. That's Election Day. It's going to be on Wednesday, the 21st. So that, that's my fault. So the 21st is a Wednesday. That'll be our next Finance Committee meeting. We'll make sure we change that and advertise that. Policy Committee, Mrs. Michelle Stepnick, Chair. Recommend approval to accept the following policies.
On behalf of the committee, I make that motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion to the motion? If no discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries.
Policy Committee met on April 15, 2014. Mrs. Stepnick will make this report.
Yes. In addition to the two policies we've already noted, we also discussed Policy 707 again, and that was the use of facilities. And this purpose was for possibly opening up the use of facilities on Sundays. We had had some issues with a couple of athletic teams that are not associated with our, actually with the Plum School District, but that had asked for a use of our facilities, and we were having a little bit of trouble, I think, with the scheduling. But I believe that as a whole, the board decided not to open up the facilities at this time on Sundays. We also, in light of the events at Franklin Regional, I had asked that we put back on the agenda for discussion was our bullying policy. We will not be making changes to the actual policy for bullying, but parents can see in the coming summer that there will be changes to their students' handbooks, and I'm looking forward to working with Dr. Rossi on those changes so we can maybe address some issues that are out there.
Thank you. The next meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, May 13, 2014, following Facilities Committee meeting in the High School Boardroom. Transportation Committee, Mr. Joe Tom Morello, Chair. The Transportation Committee did not meet this month. There is no report this evening. Athletic Committee, Mr. John St. Ledger, Chair. Recommend approval to accept the resignation of Tyler Swatchick, Senior High Assistant Track Coach Number One, retroactive to April 16, 2014, with a stipend of $6,062 to be prorated at time rendered.
On behalf of the committee, I'll make that recommendation.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion to the motion? If no discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries.
Recommend approval to hire Matt Rebovich, Senior High Assistant Track Coach Number One, retroactive to April 16, 2014, with a stipend of $3,062, be prorated for time rendered.
On behalf of the committee, I'll make that recommendation as well.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion to the motion? If no discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries.
Recommend approval to accept Michael Benura, Senior High Volunteer Assistant Track Coach for Spring 2014 Season.
On behalf of the committee, I'll make that recommendation.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion to the motion? If no discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries.
Recommend approval to hire the following coaches at the contracted rates for the Fall 2014-15 Season as listed.
On behalf of the committee, I'll make that recommendation.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion to the motion? If no discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries.
Recommend approval to accept the following volunteer coaches for the 2014-15 School Year as listed.
On behalf of the committee, I'll make that recommendation.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion to the motion? If no discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries.
The Athletic Committee did not meet this month. There is no report this evening. Food Service and Nutrition Committee, Mrs. Loretta White, Chair. The Food Service and Nutrition Committee did not meet this month. There is no report this evening. Intergovernmental Committee, Mr. John St. Ledger, Chair. The Intergovernmental Committee met on April 16, 2014. Mr. St. Ledger will make this report.
Yes, thank you. We met briefly on the 20, I'm sorry, the 16th of April. We had a few members of council there. We discussed a few things related to the, a new school bus garage. We, you know, the borough has offered their Planning Department to help us find some suitable sites. We also talked about the old PIVC sites, no plowing, things like that. There was no recommended action. We did talk about a safety update. Chief Armstrong was invited to attend an executive session to review the emergency operation plans and, you know, just to review the overview of it, not the in-depth part of it. And the last thing, the Plum Police Department has asked us to use their buildings for their testing, and we have agreed to allow them to use those buildings. And that's it.
Thank you. Forbes Road Career and Technology Center, Mr. John St. Ledger, Representative. Recommend approval to accept the 2014-15 operating and administrative budgets for the Forbes Road Career and Technology Center as attached.
I'd like to make the recommendation.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion to the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries.
Eastern Area Schools, Mrs. Loretta White, Representative. Mrs. White will make this report.
Yes, I think the most important thing that we did discuss was our budget for 2014-2015. And of course, what everybody is waiting to hear, there will be no change. So we're not raising any of our revenues. But we will be voting, first of all, at Sunrise on May 15th to approve the budget because we just kind of reviewed it. And hopefully, when you get a copy of the budget, which you will very shortly, or you will not until after we OK at May 15th, then we will vote on it here. And the eight school districts in the consortium will also vote on it. And then that way, we will have a new budget for 2014-2015. We also are not raising payments for students from districts not in the consortium, and it will still continue to cost them $2,400 a year per student. In other news, we closed a secondary life skills room and opened a new elementary autistic room. Some dates that are important for Sunrise people. Graduation is June 4th, and unfortunately, even though I do go every year, I won't be able to because that's Plum's graduation as well. The prom is May 9th at Comfort Inn in Penn Hills. End-of-the-year picnic is June 5th at Hawkeye Park in Penn Hills. And Kennywood is May 14th. We also received an update on the playground equipment that we're hoping to be able to install at Sunrise. The quote we received was $60,000. And again, that will not result in an assessment of any of the eight school districts in the consortium. We intend to pay for that using grants and fundraisers. We applied for a grant from Alcoa and also Highmark. And a golf outing to raise funds is also planned in August. So the most important thing that you need to know is no change, no raising in our assessment. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. White. Let us slate a policy council. Mr. Joe Tom Morello, Representative. Recommend approval for Michelle Stepnick to attend the PSBA Advocacy Forum and Day on the Hill, May 5th and 6th in Harrisburg.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion to the motion? If no discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries.
Allegheny Intermediate Unit Number Three, Mr. Tom McGough, Board Member. Mr. McGough will make this report.
I have a number of things I'd like to share with you. When you came in on your computer or by you, you'd have found some of my goodies that I brought back from a conference for you. This is the American School Board Journal, and it's put out by the NSBA. And just some really good best practices and some articles about the very things that we're dealing with, because we're certainly not unique in Plumbboro, and not even just in the state of Pennsylvania, but all over the country. At that conference, the AIU made a presentation on energy and energy savings, and it was kind of interesting because the headlines from articles, papers all over the country, surging electricity bills draw backlash, and surging electricity, you know, is a cause for concern. And so this is something that we're being proactive with in our district. This joint purchasing program and dealing with this energy issue, it is becoming a real problem for school districts, just as it is ours. And so that was the nature of the AIU's presentation at this national conference. So you have material there for that. Also, the, it's called Board to Board. The AIU sends out from the Executive Director, Dr. Linda Hibbert, to each of our emails. So everyone would receive a copy of this that just kind of lets you know. I know at some of our meetings, we've had questions, so what is the AIU? And so what do they do? Well, here's a monthly communication from the AIU that gives good information as to exactly what the Allegheny Intermediate Unit does. exactly what the Allegheny Intermediate Unit does. And here is also, I have for everyone, this is the 2013 Year in Review. This is the program of the Allegheny Intermediate Unit. And everyone should have a copy of this, and again, should answer any questions that you might have. It has numbers, it has the scope, it has the size, and, you know, just a little overview of some of the different programs that the AIU does. So thank you for allowing me to be a part of that board.
Thank you, Mr. McGuff. President's Report, Mr. Sal Collet. Mr. Collet will make this report.
Thank you, Dr. Glasspool. Tonight's a night of congratulations. First, for our student thespians, our stage crew, musicians on the wonderful performance of my favorite year. It was fantastic. Also, congratulations to our distinguished alumni and our National Honors Society member inductees. And certainly, congratulations to the PTA reflection winners. I was at that event, and it was wonderful. Thank you very much, and congratulations to you. Some upcoming dates. May the 12th is Academic Honors Banquet. May the 16th is the prom. May the 19th is the Senior Awards Night. June 4th is graduation. June 5th is the last day of school. And June 10th is Kennywood Picnic. It's the end of the school year. It's an extremely busy time for our staff and students, so I encourage you to visit our school webpages for additional information. And lastly, as Michelle said, I'd like to say congratulations to the BOTS team. They did a wonderful job on their victory. Lastly, I'd like to thank all the employees of the district.